Ladies and gentlemen, it is six o'clock. Please welcome this man to the floor. Mr. Anthony, fair call for the court, sir?
Yes, sir. You have a court, sir.
Thank you. City Parker Philander Market Show, Councilmember Snaggy's House this evening. This time, the invitation of Dr. Sheila Crowe, University of North Methodist. Thank you for being with us and welcome to Jasper.
Thank you very much. It's my joy to be here. And as I understand it, I have an hour to preach.
Florida errors.
Not a problem. Let us pray. Gracious Almighty God, we acknowledge your presence. And we ask that your wisdom, your guidance, and your direction will be here. We thank you for the opportunity to gather as people who love this community. We thank you for the beauty that you've provided us on the mountains, for the strength of the people, and the hope of a community led by compassion and strength. We ask that in this time, you give us courage and wisdom, and that we will all seek the common good for our community, that pride and selfishness will be put aside, that we might focus on a common good. We thank you for our leaders. Leadership is a matter of trust, and we have put our trust in these leaders. May they act with compassion, with justice, and a hope for a new day of growth and love that continues here. And may we all work for the common good of this community. May we be kind, may we speak with clarity, and may we work together to bring this community into a place where others will look and acknowledge not just the beauty of the mountains, but the beauty of the people. In your gracious and holy name, we pray. Amen.
Our flag is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Council, you have an agenda before you previously extended. Give the floor for a motion. Shall I approach you about a second? Second. Have a motion and second discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Post that? Thank you, council. Under presentations tonight, I am honored to read the proclamation of the Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. And we have our chief with us, so in the honor of Sir Lasky to come forward and be with the elected body. Whereas the city of Jasper's law enforcement officials are brave and dedicated individuals who protect our citizens, families, communities, and homes across the city. And whereas these individuals play a critical role in keeping our community safe, Jasper's law enforcement officials face immense challenges and make profound sacrifices to ensure the safety of all residents of the city. And whereas the men and women who serve on the front lines of public safety are prepared to face uncertainty and danger for the sake of protecting their neighbors. And whereas Jasper continues to train and develop some of the finest law enforcement officers and public safety officials, because of their hard work and devotion, our city remains a safe and welcoming city to live, work, and raise a family. And whereas the city of Jasper's law enforcement officials and public safety officers help to maintain the well-being of the city of Jasper, these individuals provide an invaluable service to all citizens of the city of Jasper and should be recognized for their commitment and bravery. Now, therefore, I, Carl Bradfield, Mayor for the city of Jasper, do hereby proclaim August 20th, 2025, as Law Enforcement Appreciation Day for the city of Jasper. Thank you, chief. Sounds like one of the rare picture. Thank you, sir.
Chief.
Big smiles.
Council, the next on the agenda is public comments. We do have individuals that have signed up to speak this evening. I want to make sure that everyone here, or did anyone here not have the opportunity to sign up? They would like to.
This guy put my info.
Oh, right. Mr. Tony, I got you. On what topic?
Main Street boundary extension.
We want to ask. All right, before the public comment section, I do want to read the guidelines that we have. The mayor will ask a public comment section of the agenda. This is not an unlimited public forum. Individuals making the comment must state their names and addresses. You must be physically present. Comments are limited to city matters. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. The mayor does have the right to extend the time. No personal attacks or unimportant accusations. The mayor presiding officer has the right to end the comment or comments due to violation of rules toward the length of the agenda. Individuals commenting can only exercise their public comment section reading once a meeting. No individual can allocate or transfer their time for comment to another person. No inappropriate language, signs, or images. And public comment period is limited to a total of 30 minutes. This evening, the first I have thought is Mr. Samuel Sly in reference to a stop sign at Sellers and Main, I believe it says.
Yes.
Hey, sir.
Good afternoon. I'm Samuel Sly at 175 East Sellers Street. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. I did want to bring this up during the public comments to encourage other citizens to bring up other issues that they are concerned with, utilizing this comment section that you could try and get more people to use. Even though I know that I could speak with a number of the council members about this. For the four-way stop sign at East Sellers and Main Street, for about the past year, and I could be off on that, there's been flashing lights for the four-way stop sign utilized. And I think that it was a great addition, bringing people's attention to actually stopping there. However, for the past at least two months, one of the lights has been out. It is the one that is on Main Street as you come into downtown. I do not know if it is a defect or a malfunction, neglect, or if there has been any vandalism, since I also have noticed that one of the wires seems to be sticking out. But I wanted to address the council on this matter. And just in case it's a matter of preference of local peoples wanting to disconnect it, they don't want lights in their eyes, I understand that. But I also live on these Sellers where it splits to, I think it's Orman Street. And I would be happy to have another flashing light there as well because many cars blow right through the stop sign there in all three directions. So I would just like to address the council to look into seeing what's wrong with that stop sign.
We can do it. Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda, Matthew Parks. Mr. Parks, show us.
Yes.
There you are. Yes, sir. Come join us. Thank you for being here.
Hello. Good afternoon, everybody. First, my name's Matthew Parks. I live at 2147 Coke Road. And we also, my wife and I, brook own property on top of Coke. And I know the last council meeting, my brother-in-law spoke about the proposed gun range. And I just want to say that I'm against it because of all the things that were said, just noise, safety issues. You know, our kids ride port builders and things through that area. And as mentioned before, the noise. We hear V-hiccups going up the cove. I can only imagine, you know, rounds, you know, being popped off. I'm a gun owner myself. I support the Second Amendment. I support law enforcement. That's one of the reasons why we chose the city of Jasper to raise our family. I'm a lifelong resident. I was born and raised in Pickens County. Lived on Ridgewood Road beside Mr. Looney for 20 something years.
Sorry for that.
Great name, by the way. Lived at Arbor Hills for 15 years and just recently built this house on my wife's family's land. So, you know, we are opposed to it. And actually, we would just like an update as what the, you know, projected plans are.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And I'm glad you're here this evening. I do have comments and updates later this evening on the agenda for that specific item. I believe the committee does too.
Right.
Thank you. Mr. Tony? Come on up, sir.
Hello, everybody. I'm Tony Davis. The address is 400 Georgiana Street. And I wanted to just talk about the Main Street boundary expansion that's being voted on tonight. I was at the DDA meeting, and I'm not actually for it or against it in opposition to it. But as I understood in the DDA meeting, the expansion was to include a couple of the parks, which was a requirement of Main Street America, which would make it easier to get grants or whatever wanted to be done with the Main Street area. So my question is, where are these proposed grants coming from? Is it state, federal? Main Street America, where are the grants coming from? And we all know that there's no grant without stipulations. So what are the stipulations that are going to be applied to the Main Street area that would come along with these grants that we really, as the general public, we have no idea? And it seems to be getting pushed through really quick. We had a meeting last week, now we're going to approve it this week. So I would ask that that is be tabled until the general public has more knowledge and information about what actually comes along with that decision now. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, I believe there's more comments coming up on the agenda about that actual topic too. So two of you have got covered. Mr. Sly, I will pass that along to a couple of points. Those are the only three that I had for public comments in this time. Council, next on your agenda is the consent agenda. I just have two items on it. Give the floor for a motion.
Make the motion, consent agenda be accepted.
Have a motion accept.
Second.
Motion and second discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Post that? Thank you, council. New business, consideration of Pickens High School special event application. Mr. Alden, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. Evening, Mayor and council. So this evening, I have got several events that have come across our desk that the city has talked with the organizers. And it is my pleasure to present these to you. The first one is going to be Pickens High School. Their request to hold their homecoming parade through downtown Jasper. You'll recall that last year, they did this after quite a long hiatus in holding parades. It went very well. Actually, the high school and the schools that participated in this parade were all extremely easy to work with. And this was probably one of the smoothest parades that we have had the pleasure of hosting. So Pickens High School would like to hold their homecoming parade on Wednesday, September 17th. It is earlier this year than it was last year. You recall that it was in October. I believe this is due to some scheduling of fall break is when that would normally happen. And so they have shifted their homecoming game up. They also have agreed that they would like to try our modified parade route, which will take them, they come the reverse route. So they come from Jasper United Methodist, the field. They come up Spring Street. They turn onto Main, and then they will be turning at Stigall Alley or Stigall Station. I know some folks call it both things. But the bottom line is that they'll be coming through the removable bollards, then enheaded straight down Stigall Drive to Leamington Park, where they will have a festival for hour and a half, couple hours, something like that, with games and things like that for the children. And then they will clean up and head on home. This parade is completely school-oriented. So it is any of the schools that we have here in Pickens County, the athletics, the clubs, the different civic organizations that are associated with the schools. There are no commercial participants that come and do floats or anything like that. And so we would ask that council approve this application so they can go ahead and proceed with getting their insurance lined up and everything like that. And we can start making plans for this parade. Thank you. I do have Holly Riley with Pickens High School. She is here this evening. If anyone has any questions, Holly organized all of this last year. And so she has the honor of doing so again this year. So if you have any questions, be glad to put her on the spot and make her answer lots and lots of questions.
Because Holly, you want to come on up and tell us about this? Let's get some advertising going. And we have law enforcement.
Hi, everyone. I'm Holly Riley. I'm the instructional for Pickens High School and have the pleasure of organizing the homecoming parade, homecoming dance, and prom. So throw it at me, I'm ready. We're super excited to get to have the parade again. It's a little bit earlier this year, might be a little warmer. But our kids loved it. The community seemed to love it. I think it was great for the businesses on Main Street. We're going to have our student athletes out there building up the businesses again, getting everybody prepared to paint the town green. So we're hoping to get some churches involved. We know it's Wednesday night, it's Thursday this year, and that's a big church night for a lot of our kids. So we've already contacted churches to get some more participants in the festival. So we're hoping to make it a little bit bigger than last year.
One of the nice things about last year was that Holly had organized the students to come downtown, and they visited just about every business that they could that was open at the time that they stopped by so that they would be aware of the parade route and the disruption to traffic and things like that. And they have agreed to do that again this year as well.
Well, that's awesome.
Any questions?
Council, any questions? We will respond.
No questions. Just great penmanship on this application.
My favorite part of the application.
She's an educator, so.
My favorite part of the application is estimated number of attendees. A lot.
Yeah.
Council, I'll give the floor for a motion.
Make a motion that be approved. Pickens County High School Special Event Application for the Homecoming Parade.
This motion? And a second. Any discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Post that? Thank you, council.
Excellent.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Welcome to a new school year.
Thank you.
Item number two, consideration of Jasper United Methodist Church event application. Mr. Alden.
Yes, so we have another longstanding event that is coming before us this evening. This is the 44th Marble Festival Road Race that is put on by Jasper United Methodist Church. They have a 5K and then a one-mile fun run, walkers and runners. And this always happens the weekend of Marble Festival. So this will be held on Saturday, October 4th. The race starts at 8:00. And they are fast apparently because they run all the way down there and they're done and cleaned up by the time the parade starts, then around 10:00. So we would ask for approval for this event as well. Ms. Juanita Tatum is here with us this evening. I know I see her name on the applications every year. And so I know she's a big part of why this road race is so successful. So if you have any questions, I know she's not super eager about standing in the talk. Because she told me she wasn't. But we'll be happy to run through some questions if y'all have any.
Council, any questions? I'll give the floor for a motion.
Think a motion is be approved?
Motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second discussion, council?
Penmanship on this one's very good.
I think my my helper spoke that. But I do, I did teach penmanship at NCC.
Yes, ma'am, you sure did. It didn't stick so well with me, though. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post that? Thank you, council. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Excellent. Thank you. So the final event that we have this evening is actually for our organization. So this will be for National Night Out, as put on by the Jasper Police Department. Y'all will recall that we had our inaugural year in 2023. Unfortunately, last year, the weather did not cooperate, and we had to cancel that. I think that might have been a hurricane and threw, and so we were not able to hold it. National Night Out is typically the first Tuesday in August, which would make it tomorrow, August 5th. We hold ours a little bit later, though, to try and escape some of the heat. And because we hold it at one of the parks and we need that space, it is a little easier for us to hold it on the Saturday. So this is scheduled for Saturday, September 13th, starting at 4:00. Be over around 8:00. As we have in the past, we will have one of our community partners helping us cook. They will be doing hot dogs and hamburgers with all of the fixings. All of that is free. We want families, children, whoever wants to come, to come to this event this on the 13th. It is a great opportunity to meet some of law enforcement and fire community and everyone that works so hard to keep all of us safe and developing those partnerships in community between our neighborhoods and our agencies with us. And I have heard a rumor that there might be a football game that afternoon. And so Chief Dawkins is working on a way to show that football game so that adults will have something to do that he can use. We would ask for y'all's approval to allow us to hold this on the 13th of September. Chief Dawkins is here. I think you saw him maybe a little bit ago. He didn't escape yet. So if you have any questions, I'm sure he would be delighted to come up with any.
Council, any questions?
Yeah, one thing I've said I wanted to try and push back on was how do we move events from Lee Newton closer to our businesses downtown and get foot traffic moving up and down Main Street? Any possible locations closer to downtown that we could think this would be a good fit? Whether that be at the top of Perot Park and highlighting what work is going to be coming, Stigall cooking out, showing the game there. Just trying to think through how we can help our small businesses down Main Street.
Sure. So I appreciate that. I'm not sure that Perot is going to be the greatest location because we'll have the groundbreaking coming soon. And it is my understanding, as soon as all of the contract work, we have our pre-con with ARC, they are itching to get started. And so that is going to become an active construction site. So for safety, I'm not sure that that's the greatest location to hold something. In future years, yes, maybe, maybe so. One of the reasons why we had had it in Leamington Park the first year that we did was because of the bounce houses and the activities and games and things that were being there. Kids were running on grass, a little bit safer than running on the asphalt. We had actually tossed around putting everything on the park and ride lots on the south side of Veterans Memorial Boulevard. And I don't know if you were at that one or not. I know this was before you came on council. National Night Out was at the end of July, and it was about 812 people. And so we had it in the afternoon, and the asphalt was extremely hot. And so there is that. And we know you're going to have a lot of children. I think it is important to have an area that has some grass and some shade and some relief from the heat. But we can certainly look at trying to figure out another location going forth.
So sure.
Mr. Hannah, during our planning meeting for the DDA last week, we talked about how to incorporate cleaning into either our long-term strategy for Main Street. Yeah, I think that's kind of a plan several years out where we could actually, this week will have enough, a minimum where we can get clean. But it's a good point. I think the businesses deserve as much activity as we can get to.
But no.
So it's been discussed. Fortunately, that and five years from now, you'll hear, where did this come from? Well, I think they were looking, trying to look at that.
We'll show it. Maybe we could have that showed.
So we did that one here with George Martin Festival. Where we included Main Street. They really worked out and did. Problem there was that there was two different organizations. Chamber was doing Marble Festival. And then another organization was doing Up Tail. And it, there was, it was a little bit disjointed. But actually, we had a trailer with a tractor going around. So several locations, that's really, so total transportation.
Tractor came around.
That's right.
Council, any further discussion? I give the floor for a motion.
Make a motion that be approved then for Jasper Police Department's National Night Out.
And motion and second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post that? Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Item number four, consideration of Tony Davis to serve on Jasper Planning Commission. Oh, yeah, glad you heard this this evening. I didn't want you to miss this for this opportunity for me to speak about you. In life, you are given individuals that you get to become friends with, and sometimes things don't always start on a pleasant note. Sometimes the first time you meet someone, the first impression isn't a really good one. And then you get to redeem yourself at the end. And go back and actually reintroduce yourself and get to know somebody on a deeper level. And all of that, you get to know their family, including their spouse, the life they lived, the life they have lived. And you just have a deeper appreciation for somebody. It's much certainly that I have a deeper appreciation for you than I think most understand or most will ever know. And what I wanted to read was from your application. For anyone that would like to question, you know, what we're doing or why we're doing. I think you summed it up pretty well in your application. Take pride in our community, to leave things better than I found them whenever possible, and to have the ability to see a big picture. That right there, my friends, sums up exactly what I'm doing. So I want to thank you, number one, for taking the step. We don't always appear on everything, but we have the ability to love each other through it all. Council, it is my honor and my privilege to give the floor for a motion for the approval for Mr. Tony Davis to serve on our Jasper Planning Commission.
Make a motion, we approve Tony Davis to planning commission. Thank you, chief.
Got a motion, right? Second?
Second.
Motion and second discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Post that? Thank you, council. Mr. Tony, thank you, sir. I look forward to measuring an oath in our next one.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I suggest in our application process.
Yes, of course.
Could we possibly include those in that application such that the candidates will understand that they're in a sworn position and they'll understand that that's good stuff?
Absolutely. We certainly can do that. I am excited and thankful that individuals like Mr. Tony have shown interest in this. This application process, for those of you that are with us, has not always been in place. That is something fairly new to the city. We initiated and put in place an application process of which we advertise publicly when there are vacancies on our authorities or boards. And we ask those that are interested, please apply. Staff can look them up or review them and lay them on my desk in office for me to review, and then ultimately present to council. Long moment of the day is if vehicles just to get it. Item number five, consideration of approval of alcohol license.
Ms. Virchus.
Welcome to the meeting. You're good, we'll wait for you.
I'll block everyone. Hey, ma'am, Mr. Mayor, first council, Mary List of Virchus Development Director. You have a request before you by MAC 170 LLC for a deer and wine package license. This is for the 170 Anok Church Road at the corner of 550 and Anok. It's the Dunn's. They are changing hands. So their license and their business license are required. They did pass the background check, and they did display their sign on the property firm and ensure the 30 days after client, and so we are recommending through all of this.
Thank you, ma'am. Council, give the floor for this.
Make a motion to approve alcohol license. Make motion to approve alcohol license, uh, here and why, by the package for M A C one seventy LLC.
And a question of second.
So good.
Any further discussion, counsel? All in favor?
I don't know.
Close call. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, ma'am. Item number six, consideration of ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash seventeen revisions, chapter eight, two of the ordinance. Ms. Williams, well.
Hey, good evening, Mr. Mayor and counsel. Um, so to smile operating to, um, some of our previous revisions to chapter eighty-two, which is our utilities to our credit ordinances. And we've been working on Mr. Slatten to revise these, um, this chapter, sections eighty-two dash one through eighty-two dash three, which provides for utilities and the burst disconnections. Um, the changes to the ordinance revises the hours and days that services will re- reconnect if due to nonpayment without complying with utility rules or catering with our equipment. Um, so currently we offer to reconnect utilities after hours or on weekends. And, um, we don't, we don't cut services off on Fridays or on holidays to give our customers time to, then Friday, take things to try to eliminate having to go in after hours or on weekends. So currently we have one staff member that usually goes in. So for safety purposes, we are hoping to revise our ordinance to not reconnect utilities after three p.m. Monday through Friday or on weekends. Um, so I'm just asking, if counsel, would you please approve these revisions to our chapter eight, two utilities?
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, any questions? Yield the full for motion.
Motion to be approved.
Sure.
Motion and second. Any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
I don't know.
Close call. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, ma'am. Number seven, consideration approval of e-Plan Solution fee schedule, Chief Chair. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and counsel. In your agenda, you'll see, uh, two documents after that action form. Um, one of those is going to be the agreement to utilize e-Plan Solution. The other is going to be a fee schedule. Um, what e-Plan Solution is, is a software platform that will be utilized by the Fire Department's Office um, for e-plans and, uh, other things that are being submitted for digital review. Uh, also, it will serve as a point of sale for us to be able to, uh, collect fees online, be a credit card, there's some I do right now. And, uh, it will automate a lot of the process, move everything, paper to be online. Uh, also, this will help us, uh, be more efficient and allow people that are submitting plans to see comments immediately. Uh, also, the fees for this are not paid for directly by the city, it's by any user. So it's one of those where it's, it's not going to, every taxpayer is wanting people that are a part of this service. Uh, fees are worked in, uh, to the new fee schedule. That's the reason for the, uh, the change to it. Uh, Mr. Slatten recommended that after we reviewed the agreement. And we made the change to the agreement, it was approved by him, then we modified the fee schedule to include e-Plan Solutions fee. Uh, like I said, they collect it from the user when they submit plans. The fees are different depending on how much is submitted. Obviously, it's not for everything. A lot of the point of sale stuff, if they don't cover such as, uh, commercial burn terminal or something like that, they don't have the added fee to it. Um, it's just going to be, they'll handle point of sale for us.
Do you have any questions for us?
Counsel, any questions?
Is this an open for our I S O ready?
No, not necessarily, although planning is on, excuse me, planning is on it. But, uh, community reduction of the Fire Department's Office, that's included in there, uh, how frequently we update codes and how frequently we adopt it.
Counsel, yield the full for motion.
Make a motion to approve, uh, agreement that's e-Plan Solutions and the subsidy fee schedule.
I have a motion, right, second.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion, counsel? All in favor?
I don't know.
Close call. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Item number eight, consideration of ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash eighteen for special event license. Mr. Davis, hello, sir.
How are you, sir? Uh, Chief Chair, that's when you say, uh, council member, uh, taking it from five to three, we'll do better next time. We're, uh, a three, I so three. What are we, chief?
We're the three.
Okay, for those in the ten, that's a, that's a big deal. So, uh, thank you, Mr. Hannah, for the plug. See, you missed the opportunity. We got to do a little coaching to kind of get it to.
All right, now we're number eight.
So, uh, this is, uh, something that last year, uh, you all may recall, we had looked at the alcohol ordinance, specifically section, um, that deals with special events licenses. So as it currently stands, there are three that can be issued by, by the mayor. Uh, it does comply with O C G A in terms of broad interpretations relative to, uh, entities that have an existing alcohol license. Uh, they will approach the city and so they will go to the state to get, um, a, a license there. Anytime you have an alcohol license at the local level, uh, the state will choose to have some sort of authority from the issuing authority, which is us, saying we're going to take this alcohol off-premise, uh, to which location, uh, for what intent. Uh, this allows to go from three to eight. And it does allow from sort of one day up to four days. Uh, I know Counselor Lewis Navy, who was not here this evening, had expressed some, uh, more, I guess, you could call it into weeds, uh, which is pertinent. But in terms of staff's contention that we have our fourth downtown live, uh, we do want to be mindful that the way this is written, it would be advisable to go ahead and at least consider making these changes. And then if we needed to go ahead and revise it, make it more robust, make it more rigid, uh, because right now the broad parameters does give discretion to us. And we feel comfortable at the staff level that we have operated under this, uh, section quite some time. And this is merely just to expand the number of times, but if we needed to act a little more rigid, uh, we can do so.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, thoughts on the opportunity we have before us, uh, up to eight requests a year, um, four days versus one day? Most of our events and festivals are going to either be a singular day or two. So, um, Marble Festival, Jeep Fest, things like that, keep in mind for what's actually held in town. The majority is a two-day festival. I would ask that counsel entertain the maximum available request of two days.
I haven't thought of it, but I got some questions.
Answer.
When? What's that?
What, uh, what's, um, accountability with this? Is that something that Chief Dawkins' team kind of looks through? Is it planning and zoning to check for, um, these special event licenses?
So, uh, the good thing is, all the entities we're dealing with are entities that are issued a license through us anyway. So if there was a special event and they want to have something in Lee Newton, downtown, this parking lot, anywhere other than their location, they would come to, at this point, the Planning and Zoning Commission or Planning Commission. They talk with the team there. I think Mary requires them to show either they're living for with their state, uh, license or that they have received it. A lot of times it's the who gets it first, but because they already, they already have a, a license from us, I think typically we would issue the permit and then they probably then follow up with the state. So we, we just verify. Ultimately, when it comes down to alcohol, it has always been a, a state issue in terms of enforcement, uh, devices in terms of saying, well, the Department of Labor, whomever comes in, and they, they may plan an audit, what we try to say to you. You know, here's the rules, here's the compliance, here's our local ordinance. And beyond that, uh, it's on them to ultimately accountable to the state, uh, should they account to, you know, find a indiscretion.
You know, my only thoughts were, I didn't know if you had language that says that. Like, um, either they go to local first, we issue it language in here saying you have to go to the state to get your license to D U R or whatever. Um, or on the front, you know, a license will only be approved if you got your state.
And I'll tell you, the reason why I like it from administrative perspective is a dozen years in another jurisdiction. I witnessed probably a dozen different discussions with the state in terms of alcohol, because ultimately they push it back on to the local jurisdiction and say, look, you go through the public hearing process to, to advertise, you have a, a vote of the elected body to issue the license, because it is a privileged license, going to sit alcohol purchase license. If you've passed that, uh, then ultimately, you know, we're going to defer to you that you've issued some sort of special events license or permit. Um, so I would just be hesitant to put language that, and the state's going to come in and change it and say, well, no, now you got to do this, now you got to do that. And then we would just be back and forth. And Mary and Lindsay, y'all can, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but I just, it's ultimately the accountability is on the, the holder of the license itself. I don't feel as though the city has any culpability other than we've issued a license, they've paid the fee, and ultimately they have to follow through the step. Because even from a day-to-day of month-to-month excise tax that they have to pay to the state, I mean, there's, there's that accountability they have to do regularly that we just have to trust that they're following through. And if they're playing too loosely, they may get, they may get caught.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I have one question. Um, this is only pertinent to events where alcohol is being served, is that correct?
The special, yes, this is the alcohol.
So in other words, we're not limiting the number of other events that our businesses can have as long as there's not alcohol involved.
Yes. This is just for under the alcohol section to issue permit.
Okay, that's it.
Counsel? The eight, the year, four days.
I want to hear the floor.
Make a motion to approve, people, the ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash eighteen for special events license and, um, raising the amounts of fines. And Chief insert alcohol beverages at the back, sir.
Eighteen four. Have a motion, right, second.
Sure, I can.
Any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
I don't know.
Close call. Thank you, counsel. Item number nine, consideration approval of city Jasper's mainstream and operative displays. Welcome, Ms. Carly. All right, while you're working your way up here, um, I wrote this down. Um, if you can make sure in your presentation, if you have identified any grants, where those grants would come from, and if there are any stipulations on the grants, I don't know that we've identified any of those grants just yet, but keep that in mind as we go through this conversation. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, Mayor and counsel, uh, last Monday, the Downtown Development Authority for unanimously voted to adopt the Main Street boundary for the city of Jasper, um, which is as presented to you on the screen. Though you all also have a hard copy in the packets that Ms. Laura gave you. Um, the approach to Main Street is simply a holistic approach to downtown revitalization based on four main points that really bring two main points to a head. Uh, the four main points are design, promotion, economic vitality, and organization. Uh, the two main focuses that we're going to stem out of those are preserving and highlighting the history and heritage of our community. And then bringing foot traffic into the businesses within the Main Street boundary. So it's bringing people into downtown, which falls in line with economic development. Um, now, the Downtown Development Authority was first created for the Jasper nineteen eighty-four. Main Street's first mention was in two thousand and fifteen, with officially it being mentioned in official capacity, January two thousand and eighteen. Uh, the process really began in two thousand and twenty-four, and I was brought in on April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Did you have to have a staff person? So I am now here in the Downtown Development Authority for still working on all of these things. Um, so as far as what you're talking about with the grants, to clarify, um, then this will probably just clarify. Putting parks into, putting, including more parks into the Main Street boundary for us is not to make it easier to get grants. Um, it is simply that there is grant funding available through different avenues that can be used when you're a Main Street city and you're within that Main Street boundary, um, for our parks, to give parks attention, love, and the effort of revitalization. So I've spoken with Josh, um, at length about Jasper City's parks specifically, because that is one of the three most often things I get asked by citizens. And if by putting it in this boundary, it simply opens up grants. It is not a Main Street requirement to put the park in. It is simply that it will open up funding to us through several different avenues, one being the Department of Community Affairs, to receive money to be able to practice revitalization efforts at the park, to have money that we otherwise wouldn't have to be able to improve the park. Um, since that's something that the citizens really have shown that is important to you then. So, um, that's important.
But we haven't identified any specific grants.
No, because.
So we haven't authorized anything just yet.
No, because you, we haven't, you all would have to adopt the boundary. And then, I mean, that's, we're to incrementally do this, it's a slow.
So once we identify any potential funding sources like that, they'll be funded through the committee?
Yes, the Downtown Development Authority.
They'll go through the D D A, they'll, in a couple meetings, and then any, I guess, um, conditions would be announced then of what we're actually doing.
Yes.
Awesome.
Any questions?
Uh, and just to clear, and, and this is not marginalizing grants, but Mr. Davis, just as an example, fifteen years in Acworth, uh, and this is to disparage federal or state entities, there was zero grants applied for, um, in Acworth. This is a Georgia exceptional Main Street, one of a dozen or so in the entire, it's the next step above Main Street. So, again, part of, from a practical matter, mayor and counsel, you all know that in two thousand and nineteen, the referendum for S P L S, that was identification of, hey, we want to do for a park, recognizing twenty twenty, you know, after it's become implemented, you got to have more than X amount of S P L S money. So Kim has put in for the Arisum Grant to leverage. Typically, these entities, they want to see that you have matching rent dollars first. So that's the programming from either a S P L S, typically from a S P L S initiative. And in the two thousand and twenty-six proposed, we had not identified any matching, uh, S P L S projects. So I just wanted to lay the expectation that I do not, as city manager, manage that, uh, you know, anything can change in years to come, but at least in the immediate future, if the Main Street, uh, program continues to go from affiliate to, to own, uh, it's more about the whole points, the, the preservation, uh, the other aspects, and a little less so about as a grant opportunity. Uh, it's just, and Mr. Davis is correct, there's always some sort of condition, stipulation, matching dollars. So it's not something that, I don't want it to be the lead-in with this. I think Carly and D D A was wanting to say that in the future, and that could be ten years from now, if there are identified sources of matching monies, you wouldn't want to miss the opportunity.
Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll, we'll draw a few of these points.
Yes, sir.
First of all, it's, um, it's important to understand that, um, all of this activity comes from a longstanding wish from our citizens, beginning in two thousand and fifteen, to transform our downtown area. Now, some of the folks that don't understand it, uh, weren't around then, um, but this isn't something that all of a sudden happened. I've mentioned this before, I'd like to recognize, uh, Amy in the background there. She was the chairman of our Downtown Alliance Committee at the Chamber, uh, also served as our D D A chairman, and she was one of the, uh, mothers of this, um, the birth of this movement. And out of that, uh, time in history, came forth a, a study done by Killian Warren, one of the most respected engineering firms in the southeast, um, a transportation study. And, and interestingly enough, we're going to be talking about the Killian Warren study a lot tonight, uh, just by happenstance. But out of that study came, uh, some of the traffic patterns that we may be talking about tonight. Uh, the green space at Pro Park came out of that. There are many other things, wayfairing signage, um, and, and, and then the Main Street program came out of that as it relates to the Chamber of Commerce. The D D A and the Main Street are separate programs. The D D A is a, uh, is an entity unto itself. We are the governing body for the D D A. And it really is a tool to help us, uh, manage, um, our assets, uh, because we're not really, uh, as a, as a, as a city, we cannot maintain long-term debt on properties. And so it's a very powerful tool, uh, tool that allows us to do that. And that's a gross over simplification. And to, to our, uh, to this council's. And to, to our, to this council's benefit and support and praise, we have done a tremendous job in transforming our DDA to a position where we continue to move forward, maybe a little bit at a time, but we're moving forward toward a professional organization. The Main Street is a program that, as Carly mentioned, there are four tiers to it. Economic development's the one that always scares people, because they always think that means growth. Economic development can mean growth, but what it really means is that it's something that's very much in the public's voice right now. It supports businesses that are already here, so seventy-five percent, Georgia's one of the most successful states in the nation with economic development. We don't have a formal program right now, because at one point in time we did, but the county, we went our separate ways on that. And this, so it's an economic development tool, where we can actually encourage our businesses, but also have opportunities for new businesses coming in. The other thing that is very important is, is historic preservation. So in all the talks about, we're gonna lose the character of our downtown, the Main Street program is designed specifically not to let that happen. That's one of the, that's one of the pillars. And I would encourage all of you to go to GeorgiaMainStreet, let me get the exact, GeorgiaMainStreet.org, you can read all you want to about Main Street, all the, all the information you need, and this is a journey that we're on, there are very specific requirements, and one of those requirements is, is that we delineate the area that the Main Street program will be included in, and that's what this map is. So it's a very exciting thing. There are other things that have come out of this, and really, it's designed to give us access to resources, help us organize our downtown area, and the events are just a small part of it. Of course, let's see what else I wanted to mention. Oh, there's one other thing that I had, had learned today. Someone online had questioned whether, so I serve on the council, obviously, the DDA and also the Main Street Board. The Main Street Board, by the, per the recommendations of the Department of Community Affairs, recommended that the DDA Board and the Main Street Board be the same individuals, but technically, it's still two separate individuals. The DDA being its own entity unto itself, of us as the governing body, and then the Main Street program is a part of the City of Jasper. And I know it's a little bit complicated and confusing, but someone had questioned whether I should be on all three of those, and I wanted to, and the paper, I think, had made a mistake in their quoting the law. So if you will Google thirty-six dash forty-two dash seven, parentheses, A, parentheses, three, you will learn that that's the law that allows me as a, or any of us, as elected officials, to serve on our DDA, and then at the recommendation of, of the DCA, also on the Main Street Board. There is no conflict whatsoever. There is no conflict whatsoever. The law allows it, and so I just wanted to share that information. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. I have also had the pleasure of observing on the DDA.
That's a nice question.
Ms. Carley, I believe you're asking for approval of the DDA's adopted Main Street boundary. Any kind of approval that you wanted to add?
Not unless anybody catches the others, but shoot. Sure.
Counsel, I'll guilty for the question.
Make a motion to approve DDA's adopted Main Street boundary. I'll say.
So have a motion and a second, can discussion, counsel? I don't need some discussion, I'll add to this, as it was discussed at the DDA meeting, but this map can be altered or edited as needed in the future by the government. Do you have a discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a number ten, discussion abandonment of public driveway. Mr. Douglas.
Yes, sir. I'm Mr. Mayor, counsel, and don't know if Mr. Christopher Bryant?
Yeah.
Just to tee it up, y'all seen some correspondence, Mr. Bryant's here representing property that has put a request, so I will go after Mr. Bryant and just kind of add any sort of additional bureaucratic mumble jumbo.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas, thank you, counsel, thank you, mayor. I am here on behalf of my grandfather, my late grandfather's estate, Mr. Jimmy Young, who was a lifetime resident of the City of Jasper. We are moving forward with selling his property at thirty-four Oakmont Drive, and we need an abandonment deed for the driveway going down to his shop, which was, back in the seventies, deemed a road, a city road, called Greenwood Court. But it has never been upkept by the city. My grandfather upkept the driveway, it is primarily a driveway, but without having an abandonment deed, I cannot move forward with selling the property to his one, so.
And counsel, to that, I will say I have been on this piece of property listed many times, and he is correct, this is a driveway, it has never been a public road that's been in use that I'm aware of. Mr. Douglas?
So, thank you. And when Chris had brought this up, it's one of those unique situations that, believe it or not, is unique because it's coming down to a transfer of ownership, and I believe the other entity is interested in having this matter cleared, having a free title to the entire parcel, and not to have any encumbrances of public rights supporting. In the legal aspect, this is considered a public right-of-way, because that's the way that the plat was platted, meaning that when the original people owned this parcel, they put in for a proposed road to serve multiple parcels, clearly, that never came to fruition, there's no street, it is merely just an unbuilt, it's considered an unbuilt street, so it's still a public rights-of-way. So it is done a little differently, that there is no requirement to have any sort of public advertisement beyond what's being agenda tonight, since the only vested party is this single property owner. So again, we're not dealing with multiple parcels. In consultation with Mr. Siphon, you will see in your packet a certificate of abandonment along with a couple of other documents, it's a quick claim deed along with the resolution. So I believe, Mr. Siphon, if there was some consideration from counsel, they would need to do a motion to approve the resolution, which is essentially abandoning this public rights-of-way. As the mayor tested, as Chris had mentioned, as city manager, we have no known public interest in this rights-of-way. So as a matter of record, there is not some grand plan that we anticipate on coming in and building a street and having it cul-de-sac. So from an abandonment perspective, what that is saying is this resolution is essentially saying we're abandoning that rights-of-way. There is a second part that, to make it legal, is that then would need to be an approval or a motion for reclaiming of that, that was property, that rights-of-way. It's nominal at best in terms of, you just put in, Mr. Siphon, put in the legal description that, based upon the rights-of-way as platted, that that is the property we would be quick claiming over to the property owner. So in effect, there are questions we can answer, but just wanted to make sure y'all knew that it's kind of a two-parter, whether, Mr. Siphon, you want it in one motion or two separate motions, abandoning with resolution two oh two five dash eleven, and subsequent issuing the property to the property owner after it's banned.
I do have, I'm writing this, two, two, two resolutions and one quick claim deed.
That's just one resolution to abandon the twenty twenty-five dash eleven, and then the other one is just a motion to quit claim to abandon property to.
Yeah.
Counsel, any questions before I use the full projections?
So, so this is gonna eventually be divided into four properties, is that correct?
You hear what? It's my understanding that the, the person who reached out, I guess the buyer, was anticipating on subdividing into four portions.
Counsel, you have the floor for a motion to approve the resolution with ban of two thousand twenty-five dash eleven.
Summon.
Second. Motion and a second, discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sir. Counsel, you have the floor for a motion to have the approval of quick claim deed of the property mentioned to the appropriate partner.
Summon.
Motion, you have a second.
Say.
Any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sir. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, all.
Thank you, sir. Chris, I was hoping this would be a plaster. I have a number eleven, discussion on stormwater proposals, and that's got your welcome back.
Yes, thank you. So, counsel, may recall, maybe three months ago or so, staff had brought before you an area, two, three areas, to be exact, of drainage issues, where we were looking for some direction on how to proceed with correcting those drainage issues. Squaw Valley, then Stigall Drive, maybe a hundred to two hundred feet up from the Mary Street intersection, and then right at Mary Street at that intersection. As city was doing our due diligence and kind of figuring out how, what it was that it was going to take to fix these areas, Charles had gotten a quote from a vendor for one of the areas, and that quote came in at seventy-eight thousand dollars, which is well over the city's procurement policy in what we are able to spend without going out for competitive bids. And so with that information, we decided to package the three areas together in an attempt to make them a little bit more attractive to a contractor to bid on all three and see what kind of pricing we could get back. The plan to pay for this was using the special allotment, the LRA funds through LMIG that was issued by the governor's office, that was roughly ninety-five thousand dollars, I believe, and then we have a tiny bit amount that is left in our 2014 SPOSS, which is specifically designated to be used for roads, drainage, sidewalks, those types of improvements. So all in all, we have about a hundred and forty thousand dollars to spend on these repairs. We put together our RFP, put that out in about the middle of June, bids came in on July the twenty-first. Unfortunately, although we had gotten many questions through the RFP process, we received only one bid, and that came in at roughly five hundred thousand dollars. So we have a hundred and forty thousand dollars to spend, and that is for five hundred thousand dollars, so to speak. There were two options listed in there, one came in just shy of five hundred, the other option came in at five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So as we evaluated that bid and started looking at some areas where we could perhaps call some of those items out, things like MOT, where maybe Josh's group could handle that maintenance of traffic during the repairs, or purchasing the pipe ourselves to save on sales tax, things like that, we could not pull enough things out of that quote to get it below, I think it was around three hundred thousand dollars, maybe a little bit less than that, which is still significantly higher than that hundred and forty thousand dollars that we have to spend on this project. So with one of the members of the enterprise committee yesterday, or last week, excuse me, we did talk about some options going forward, and one of those options is to actually meet with Enliner, that is the vendor who was selected for the Jifa project, the sanitary sewer rehab, even though this is storm pipe and not sewer pipe, it is essentially the same thing, and sewer, storm sewer can be repaired using lining purposes, short liners, all of those things that we'll be looking at doing. And so one of the options is to speak with Enliner and see if they can provide us some unit pricing to correct all of these areas and see if we can get in more in line with what we have to spend for this project. There may be some other things that we have tossed around, that we are looking into, we need to do some deep research and things like that first, but we may have some other items that we can, can proceed with as well. But before we can do anything, we do need counsel to go ahead and reject the one bid that we received for view site work, so that we can proceed going and looking at some other options. I'm happy to answer any questions, I know I talked a lot.
And, and just to, just kind of give an example, because I wanna, I wanna bring it all around, this is part of the frustration when you're dealing with a government entity that is audited and has certain policies and procedures. Charles, Josh and I, Kim, we've made all sides, we look at a problem. We ask the subject matter expert, local vendor, hey, what can you do to solve a problem? You give us a quote of almost eighty grand, it exceeds fifty thousand dollars. I do not have the authority, and neither do y'all, to just usurp policy, because then the auditors would peg us, and then that's just a bad practice. So the only thing that we could do is say, well, let's put together a package and try to see what would, you know, maybe somebody, and the way that we structured the proposal was that maybe of three projects, maybe one of, we talked to Mr. Siphon, say, look, we're gonna put this proposal out, maybe you didn't wanna do this one, but maybe you wanna do this one, so we'll get a favorable amount. Squaw Valley, just as an example, came in at two hundred and seventy-three thousand. So when you look at, you say, well, golly, why didn't you just go with the seventy-eight thousand? We can't. And it would have been ideal had we gotten more vendors to come in and say, hey, we'll do this for you for this, or we'll do this or this. So now we're at a point of saying, well, we just don't wanna bring our hands and say, well, we're done with it. Fortunately, we do have a possible solution that may be less than fifty thousand, because if they come in at forty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine, and yeah, they could be reading this transcript and looking at the video, that's within our policy to where we have a viable option. It's just, we just cannot usurp the mechanism that we have in place. And then we look at, you know, going through the committee, you're looking at a D-Dub, well, the thirty-eight thousand dollars that they put for, well, for traffic control, well, we close the road, okay, let's D-Dub thirty-eight thousand. Well, that was the only thing that we could D-Dub, so it's not even a matter of us not wanting to work with a local vendor to say, hey, work with us on this and this, and let's pare this down, we just can't get to that amount. So to Kim's point, the only viable solution that we had was to reject this, and we're gonna have to look at other ways of trying to get some of these projects, because as you saw last fall, we have an estimate of probably eight to nine million dollars, with Mary and Josh went out with kind of an expert last fall, looked at certain of our assets, there was about eight or nine million dollars worth of need relative to stormwater repairs. So it's not surprising that it comes in that high, it's just discouraging, because it's not as though we want to not do it, it's just a matter of what allocated monies are available and how we can kind of work within that. So we hope to have some good news in the next month or two of saying, hey, here's some viable options, we'll take the committee, bring it back before council, but I didn't wanna draw special attention to that, because we did break down in your packet even option one, option two, with some D-Dubs, and even when you take out seventy-eight thousand dollars worth of option one and two, you're still left with a hundred and fifty, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for just that one.
Both.
That's it.
Counsel, and this time, I'm gonna yield the floor for a motion to reject the bid that we received.
Make a motion to reject the, for, uh, C-Crawl and Squaw Valley. Three options.
Have a motion, I have a second.
So, yeah.
Any further discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sir. Thank you, counsel. And counsel, I hear staffs redirected to research and present options to the committee and the council later today. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a number twelve, discussion against the Plaza and Mall Street, Mr. David Carey. Come on up, sir. Thank you for being with us, and I believe we're gonna use the monitors we have here with you, and they're also there.
Great.
Okay, to begin, I'd like to thank the mayor, city council, and all the city's city hall staff for the opportunity to discuss Hensley Plaza, which is located at thirty Wall Street in downtown Jasper. More specifically, the potential for sidewalk and streetscape improvements and the conversion of Wall Street. of Wall Street to a one-way. As we discuss the situation, I would ask that one core question be considered, is what is being proposed in the best long-term interest of the community? If you think it is, I'm confident that we can figure out the logistics and planning of how to execute a solution that will make an impactful and meaningful difference in our community. You might also ask yourself, is this the right project at the right time? First, I'd like to share some context on the why and purpose of this project. What we are proposing is different and new, it represents change. To my knowledge, a private-public sidewalk improvement project has never been done before in the history of Jasper. I'd like to share some of the chronological history around how we got to this point. Noteworthy, I'm not originally from Jasper, but live and work here now. After a career as a small business owner and entrepreneur, I stumbled my way into real estate development and a new chapter of life. One of the first investments was in downtown Jasper and purchasing what many know as the Cagle Used Car Lot in the parking lot next to John Luke Weaver's law office. So imagine that, I was sandwiched next to the former mayor's son's law office in the Cagles, a well-known legacy family of the area that has their own Cagle Town named after them. I was met with lots of understandable ske- skepticism, and right across the street, less than thirty feet away, was a homeless shelter. There were lots of challenges, but I've reached this point in life where one of you challenges is learning opportunities. The why is rolling up our sleeves and serving the community. The mission of our company is predicated around facilitating and inspiring impactful and community- enriching real estate development in the North Georgia area. Okay, back to the parking lot. Many of you saw the before condition of that parking lot. It was completely dilapidated, it was cracking, the, the asphalt was cracking, there was trash all over the lot, the parking stripes were completely faded, and there were weeds everywhere. There were also rusty metal stairs along the retaining wall that were not installed properly and a safety hazard. Long story short, we cleaned up the lot, we added a trash bin, we put on a new topcoat of asphalt, we removed the dangerous stairs, we striped the parking spaces, we added better lighting, we removed some disgusting trash like cat litter that people would dispose of and drug paraphernalia on the side of the lot next to the building. I can't tell you how many times I've been asked, why are you doing this? And to be transparent, my entrepreneurial DNA would overcome me at times. Is the timing right for a boutique hotel or some other highest-in-best use structure? Should this be Jasper's first paid parking lot? But something else was beginning to happen. The project became more about passion than profit. It became more about community goodwill and earning trust. I started to know the Cagles better, I no longer was just their landlord, and I somehow, I started to get to know other people in the community, including those in the homeless shelter. And some downtown residents asked if they could park their cars in the lot because they felt safer there, and some of the surrounding restaurants, like the old Mule House, needed extra employee parking. I also reached out to downtown Jasper Live organizers and volunteered parking for them on event dates. I decided that the best thing to do was to complete the parking lot renovations and actually do nothing. I didn't put up any no parking signs and actually encouraged the Mule House employees to park there to free up more convenient parking spaces for customers on Main Street. The parking lot is still there, and I've been continuing to try to maintain it to a standard that I think downtown Jasper deserves. In the spring of twenty-twenty-four, I was approached by Harold Hensley to purchase his property directly across the street as he eyed retirement. This property was Hensley Service Center for thirty-two years and a landmark in downtown Jasper. I believe all of you are familiar with the history of the building. It used to be the old Jasper City Hall and Jail as late as the nineteen-seventies. The building had so much charm and character, I did not want the Hensley's property to fall into the wrong hands. During that process, I got to know Harold and his wife, Phyllis. The nineteen-thirties building and property was also an incredible challenge. Again, I was seeing the challenge as an opportunity to stay true, though, to our mission and purpose. Some of the problems we encountered, a tenant illegally squatting and living in the back of the building, the parking lot on the side was so cracked and warped, it was not usable, a V-shaped bulletin board with people adoring scandalously clad yoga attire was oftentimes the first impression people heading into downtown Jasper would be welcomed with. We were not deterred, we went to work and cleaned up the exterior with cosmetic improvements in the interior, which had hundreds of roaches, some rats, even termites. We got the building up to code, we passed all the necessary inspections, we received a land disturbance permit, and we removed the billboard. Again, the billboard felt like the right thing to do, removing it even though it was generating income. We engaged local contractors and removed and hauled, hauled away the cracked concrete. We started to do rough grading and put up the erosion control liner. While all this was going on, I was contacted by the Georgia Department of Transportation, GDOT, they were reaching out to inform me that the Highway Fifty-three expansion that was started on twenty-five plus years ago was really happening. We are now in the final stages of eminent domain and the right-of-way process for them to take away part of the property. When we put together the site plan, we looked at ways to beautify and improve the area. This included removing an electrical panel that was on a pole from forty-plus years ago. There was also an overhead power line that we're not, that was in eyesore but became a safety hazard. We contacted Georgia Power to look at the level of effort to bury the cables and modernize the infrastructure behind Ma- Main Street at the same time. We began the process of finalizing and easement, which would allow for the burial of the cabling. The existing utilities run along Ma- Main Street, which is where the current utility markings are in front of the building. Noteworthy, as well, around this time, in March of twenty-twenty-five, we welcomed the Wall Street Barber Shop, a locally-owned small business on the end cap of the building. They take up approximately twenty percent of the space, and we are trying to lease the remaining eighty percent to a family-owned restaurant. More than anything, we wanted Amy and her team to feel supported and better understand how we can set her up for success. During the land disturbance permit phase, we put together a site and landscape plan. The plan was shared with city hall officials in a very transparent way. There was also public awareness of the vision that showed the, the future GDOT Roundabout and what the possibilities were for activating the area behind Main Street. When someone saw the press release and posted it on social media, there were over a hundred and eighty comments on Facebook. The majority were overwhelmingly supportive of the rendering and plan to create a third place to host micro-events, play music, have outdoor seating, and other amenities that allow people to connect, gather, and socialize in an open-air setting. This include sharing the importance of historical reservation, improving the walkability and pedestrian experiencing, experience, leveraging the existing parking lot, and trying to activate and integrate various parts of downtown. It's important to note, none of this was really my vision or idea, the community are the experts. I made it a goal to meet with as many people as possible to get feedback from the community around what possibilities were for that area. I saw my role as a facilitator. Something else began to happen as well. When neighbors see other neighbors investing in their property in their downtown, a stronger sense of community pride begins to organically happen. Amy planted beautiful flowers and had an amazing grand opening. The owner of New York Pizza pressure washed his facade and replaced the stair railings. The gas station owner next door reached out to help. From my perspective, we know what needs to be done. There are four small variances as part of the site plan that you will hear about next month that will help our locally-owned small businesses. We have now been involved with seventeen different permits, variances, inspections, and fees totaling eleven thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars. We have drafted a hydrology and underground utility and geotechnical reports, we have set up trash and water service with the city of Jasper. We've been completely committed to advancing this project from the day we purchased the land. While I am incredibly appreciative for the city of Jasper staff, this is not scalable. While this has become a passion project that I care deeply for, I feel like sometimes changing my job title to philanthropist. I can no longer do this anymore on my own with one part-time employee. I firmly believe what is needed is a private-public partnership to help advance the back of Main Street forward that is in the best long-term interest of the community. So here is my specific ask and proposal. Schedule a meeting with key stakeholders to discuss what this partnership would actually look like. Please note that I am not asking for money, we are asking for resources, embedded knowledge, and expertise from the city of Jasper. This kind of collaboration is actually becoming more common in towns to address infrastructure issues and street skate improvements, particularly in small towns where they see the long-term value of commercial sales taxes in a vibrant town town. If this does not happen, we end up in a loop of doom, which essentially means that fees in every aspect of improvement are passed on to local developers or property owners. This is not sustainable, this is already not working, this simply creates a lack of economic development. This creates a scenario where the property owners will actually do nothing, will have tenant turnover, will have higher commercial vacancies downtown, and we will watch downtown Jasper area slowly decline and become irrelevant. We should all be optimists but realists. For example, it's sad and frustrating to see next door to the homeless shelter, a laundromat that has had no front door for months, directly next to the parking lot that we've worked diligently to maintain. Is not having a front door on a downtown Jasper business the kind of standard we want to set? My response to that is, we need to continue to care together. All of you have been to Hensley Plaza, you've seen the amount of effort that's already been invested, you know the historical importance of the area and the potential it has to serve the community as a gathering place. Amy and the barber shop need your help to ensure the area no longer looks like a construction zone, it has convenience parking for customers. In the coming weeks, there will be more discussion on this. I believe everyone on the DDA, the Downtown Development Authority, is aware of the challenges, and I'm happy to include them in the conversations. To conclude, please remember the opening question, is partnering on this project in the best long-term interest of the community? Will this project help support locally-owned small businesses? We can always find ways to not move forward, or we can advance together. Will people question and be skeptical? Absolutely. To those folks, I would say that we have to judge each project on its own merits and trust our elected officials to make decisions that are in the best long-term interest of the community. We have an opportunity to create a, to create a shared vision to advance downtown Jasper. Thank you for your time and happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Carey, please? Did you want to speak on the image that you had pulled up?
So, this, this is what we're, we have a permit for. This would create a courtyard in an open-air environment to integrate with the building. This is something we're willing to pay for. What specifically we're looking for assistance on is the conversion of Wall Street to a one-way and to add additional parking spots in front of the barber shop. We're also looking for street and sidewalk improvements. So, um, rather than do the minimum of what would be required in order to have a cohesive flow and vision that we think will benefit the entire community, we're proposing one-way via, we, uh, one, the conversion of Wall Street to a one-way.
Thanks, sir. Counselor, thank you, Mr. Carey.
Yeah, you were going too fast, I missed them. You, you were talking about asking knowledge, experiences from employees outside of, you know, the street sidewalk upgrades, um, what were some of the other forms that you were asking?
Um, mainly, um, embedded knowledge, um, resources, um, there's been, I'll go back to, um... So... We're running basically out of time, you know, we're, we're trying to, um, continue the momentum on this project, and there's four variances that are going to be voted on, you know, next month. So, um, we're looking for resources, embedded knowledge, and expertise from the city of Jasper in order to continue the project. Thank you.
Hey, I've got a couple questions for you. Um, as far as key stakeholders, um, who do you consider to be the key stakeholders for, for this project?
Um, anyone who wants to be engaged, anyone in the, in the city hall staff. Um, it could be the DDA, it could be, um, anyone who'd really be, I guess, voting on, um, passing the variances. Um, I think the city has, um, more knowledge around ordinances permitting, um, and helping with, you know, if, if there's a traffic study that's required or different traffic patterns, there has to be, um, striping for parking spaces, there has to be planning for all of that, and I'm at a point where I can't do it alone, so, um, it's, from what I understand, becoming much more common in other towns to do these type of projects in conjunction with the private sector. And the point I'm trying to also make is, the burden could not be entirely on a local developer. It will halt economic development. There, no, no other local economic, no other developer will want to take on a philanthropic project like this.
So you're, you're a believer in strategic planning, correct? And, uh, we've had conversations about that.
Um, okay.
Have you, uh, and you mentioned, um, the Roundabout, which really was just approved, uh, about, I, well, before the council on some lighting, want to make sure that both understands, the city had nothing to do with the Roundabout, that, that's a DOT project that, whether we liked it or not, that, that's what they were going to do. And, uh, my question is, has there been any, and I think I know the answer, I know there, that, that the timing's never right, has there been any strategic planning around not just your, uh, shop or your business, but the surrounding businesses or lack thereof once the Roundabout comes in? And specifically, I'm talking about, um, the, the depot, um, the abundant amount of asphalt that's in the area that could be used as either walkable space or for parking, and, and I'll take it even further to the, the use of the parking that is there by the courthouse, this will probably give you some pushback from the people that are in charge of it, but the courthouse has their own parking lot, um, that they, that they don't utilize, of course, it's across the, the, uh, across the railroad, so, so in other words, rather than focusing on your, and I know this is critical for you, focusing on that entire, entire area, which I think could very, um, it could easily be done, the problem is going to be the resources, but we could add businesses and, um, and open space and probably gain parking, uh, including, um, possibly shutting down roads and so forth and so on, so I'd like to, I'm not, I'm not saying that that's the limit of this project, I, I would like to see a, a little bit bigger vision than the district project.
I, I would be, I would be all for that. I'm for a broader conversation around how we improve downtown parking for small locally-owned businesses.
Have you seen, have you actually seen the Kemley Orange study?
I haven't, I asked for it and I didn't, there wasn't a, a copy available.
Okay, well, I, I'll, I'll make sure you get a copy.
Okay.
I'm glad you mentioned the depot, there was the parking associated with the depot.
Very little. So there's some, there's some transition, I, I don't want to violate any...
It's reserved, uh... It's reserved for the depot. Side of the, sure, I'm not sure how that happened. I'm not sure.
It's private.
Yeah, it's private. It's private, okay.
So, the ordinances around, you know, the ordinances around how many parking spots you have, and I'm, and I'm not getting caught up in the ordinances, but there's really, for most businesses with the current amount of parking there, it would be really challenging. But I did know that the, I think there's some exciting news coming forth soon about the depot, and I think, I think, I think there's enough, if you get in there, you'll see, there's enough open space there, but I believe there could be plenty of parking there. But it may involve, and I'm not a traffic designer, but I don't think we're going to want traffic avoiding the roundabout and coming up through our Main Street area. But, and I'm also very familiar with private-public partnerships. We, we, we've done a few very small ones here, the Great was here, but I think identifying who those key stakeholders are above and beyond, obviously, I consider myself to be one of that, and I think other members of council, the DDA, but if we invite people to participate, we need to know who we want.
So, I brought the civil engineer for Boeing, assesses here. He's happy to speak to anything. The general contractor would actually be the person who did the Robert Jones Community Center in Pickens County. He's here today. We've put together a budget that we're happy to, to share and look at how we can best divide and conquer. I think one of the questions just, we have to understand is, you know, what kind of resources would the city have available to be able to put forth the project? But it needs to feel like a partnership, it needs to feel like a collaboration, and like I said, I'm on 17 permits, variances, inspections, $12,000 in fees. I can't, we, we're just, we're going to reach a point, and I think, to your point, the, the timing is right. We have a chance to activate this area behind Main Street because we have the right property owners that want to make a difference, and we're starting to build up some momentum and, but what we have right now to continue, it's, it's going to be difficult without some kind of collaboration and partnership.
Yeah, the thing I would, you're, you're running out of money for fees, and, and you mentioned a kitchen, and I would like nothing better than having more places to eat downtown, but we're out of water, and that's one of the highest demand uses that we have is restaurants. I don't want you to go away from this saying, we're not out of water, but, but we have to be very careful with our water commitments. It's much more than just an excuse.
So, if I may, I don't mean to interrupt, but when this project first came around, we did factor in highest and best use, a restaurant.
Awesome.
That type of thing has always been kind of the idea for that, and so when we look at projects and try to figure out what we're on hook for, that, that has been a lot of it.
Okay. So, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Terry and I had a conversation. I guess, I probably try to put this very singularly, not to, not to marginalize the importance of partnerships, et cetera, but the ask that we do not have the ability to do anything about other than the legislative body is converting a street, a public street, two-way to one-way. Now, again, oversimplification, I don't have an issue with it. One of the things in my 20 years of doing this, I've always said, and I told Mr. Terry, I would encourage him, I don't know if you have or not, talk to your neighbor across the street, say, hey, look, he, he's with me, we want to convert this one-way. We're the two businesses on this street, one-way, and that's an easy start.
That's the New York Pizza, sorry.
No, sir, it's the gas station.
Okay.
The other thing Mr. Terry and I talked about is, again, we don't have the ability to, to enrich private development, we don't have any measures in place relative to the, the gas station that invested into the facade and the sidewalk. I can't then use public monies to then go and install sidewalk for a business because then that business would say, well, hey, why don't you do it for me? So, and then taking utilities that are otherwise, you know, servicing a private entity and then putting those underground, using city resources to give into a trenching. So, so part of, I want to make sure that it's not being obstinate to the point of saying, we don't want this, is a matter of, in my experience, when we are working within the confines of the code of ordinances and the fee schedule that has gone through the process, we're merely having to kind of go through the steps to say, hey, this is what we're working with. Part of Mr. Terry, you know, the mayor has mentioned the July meeting, hey, let's get Mr. Terry back up here to have a discussion. So, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that the one thing that is something that can be controlled is if there is direction provided to staff to say, hey, fine, we're, we're okay with one-way, that's a start. And so, sorry, Mr. Terry, to try to oversimplify, but I think at times it can be a little confusing about what is the ask. So, what's within ours is, we can't enrich private development with public monies, we don't have measures in place. I have worked in another community that, you know, there are situations where there's scalable, you know, quantifiable economic development, bonding and/or incentives attracting, retaining, you know, businesses, certain jobs, there's these formulaic things. But in terms of one-offs or this scale, I don't know of any measures would be in place other than to say, hey, here is something we can look at, go to the property owner, because we're not dealing with an entire corridor where there's 20 affected businesses. You get a letter of support saying, we don't, we don't have any objections to it, and then we work with legal to look at, hey, this is going to work. Relative to parking, that's another one, again, not to oversimplify, Mr. Terry, but I don't necessarily have an issue with saying, okay, well, if there's two travel lanes there now and there's a conversion to public parking on one side of the road, then is that something that the city could then strike because at that point, it's not restricted to private development only, it would be considered public parking. So, again, when you're doing public to public, you can use city resources to do public to public. I just couldn't say, this is reserved for this business. Does that make sense? So, those are two things that low-hanging fruit, kind of coming away from this, that I think is achievable. I don't want to be, you know, under the opinion that we, we have any measures currently in place that we could look at, you know, these other measures. We can't preempt what the planning commission is going to do relative to the variances that would have to follow the public hearing process. So, we can't, you know, and again, staff just merely looks at the staff analysis of what the code says and applies it to the criteria, and that's why you hear the staff report.
So, the Kimmelhorn study indeed does show conversion of two lanes to one-way with parking on one side. But the Kimmelhorn study, we, we agreed to do some things out of that study, but it never really was before council where we made any standing. As a matter of fact, it was the preferred for that side of the street, so. But your variances were coming up before P and Z?
Good. So, yeah, and I think, just going back to what your brand brings up, but now very good, fair points, you know, I, just for public record, I've talked to Nick, the gas station owner, he's an advocate for this project. I've talked to Kim Jarvis, the neighboring property owner. She's excited about the site plan and, and be, be moving forward. I know the potential new owners of the train depot, they're excited about the potential for activating the space and creating a courtyard in a collaborative way. So, the big unknown, frankly, is the largest employer downtown is the county courthouse. So, how do we, how do we get their cooperation is a very fair question. I mean, and it, again, hopefully it leads to broader conversations around how, why they should not park from 8:00 to 5:00 PM and take up critical parking spaces for locally-owned businesses. That's happening right now with Amy's Barber Shop. You know, that, that has to be, it, it can't be, we don't have the resources, I'm sorry. It can't be, we don't want to enforce it. That's not a good enough answer while our small businesses are going under. You know, we need to put more pressure on the county courthouse to utilize a lot that they already have access to. So, if this brings up convert, this conversion to one-way, those kinds of conversations with the county, we should do that right now. But I think the project, the timing is right to have those kind of conversations, and especially as we're talking about, you know, Main Street America and how we can connect and integrate parks, it's a great opportunity to do that. And look, let me just, since for the public record, I have empathy for the city council. You're, in, in everyone's mind, is there an appearance of conflict if we do this for one developer, but we don't do it for somebody else, or historically, we have not done something like this in the past? And I tried to address that in my comments where just look at each individual project on its own merits and the situation as it presents itself to you. To my knowledge, the gas station owner never asked for Wall Street to be converted to one-way. He didn't ask for additional, you know, parking spaces. He put on, he put in a sidewalk improvement, and I'm willing to mirror the sidewalk improvement that he did, but if we have a chance to improve and beautify the rest of Wall Street and create additional parking spaces, then let's make that a partnership, let's make that a, a collaborative effort. And again, I don't, I don't have all the answers. Like, I think it just starts with dialogue, it starts with, you know, having some conversations and sit-down meetings with, you know, various departments at, you know, City Hall and figuring out how we can work together to advance this.
Thanks, sir. Number one, thank you, staff, and Mr. Terry for putting this back on for this meeting. I appreciate you being here and presenting the information and by request to restart this conversation. There's no action item needed at this time, counsel, that I'm aware of. I'll go ahead and direct staff to be able to look out for Mr. Terry to provide a letter of support for one-way. One staff has that shared, that with the staff, and we looked him up for one-way. Community report up next. Do you have local obstruction?
We continue to work on working against some beds for infrastructure. We are faster protein, this is also a little bit under enterprise. We're having our walkthrough, I believe, later this week, Wednesday. Unfortunately, I won't be able to attend that. The suspension continues. We are not reviewing site plans at this time, so all the projects that are currently underway have been underway already. So, there's no really, we're not growing, you know, they seem like we are, we're not growing. We're just completing the projects that have already started. And for the benefit of the public, if a project is underway and you stop it while it's underway, you really have to have a really good reason to do so, because there will be, there are legal implications for that. Yeah, I think that's it.
Which was? Nothing bad.
Finance administration, Mr. Louis, you're on your own tonight.
The committee did meet this month to discuss revisions to the utility codes, ordinance. Appreciate the council taking the action, DDA approving that.
Well, I have one more thing on their developments, I may, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Okay, the survey, the survey that's out there, I encourage y'all all to take part in the survey, and the purpose of that survey, there seems to be a little confusion that all the questions are related to development and growth. And the reason that is, is because at the root of that survey is the fact that the city and the county, a correction, the city, we're doing our own comprehensive plan, and it doesn't mean that we don't like the counties or that we're trying to divide ourselves, that's not it at all. Having our own comprehensive plan greatly benefits really the city and the county, and I can tell you that despite, that I've participated in several comprehensive plans now, the effort that has been put forth for the city's comprehensive plan in years prior has not been added with our needs, and so we made that decision. But ultimately, the reason we're going through this is because we want to eventually put in place impact fees. I mean, impact fees are a way that, Dave, as Dave's still here, he may not like impact fees, but that's a way where indeed, we can tag the developers to put forth funds that will help us maintain our infrastructure and also to service it. That's never been done before in this city, and we've always used cost of construction. And very often, those fees were waived with builders in the past, and so, but the, the impact fee is a way that long-term you can maintain your infrastructure, and we, one of the things that we have to do is go through and make sure that we follow all the statutes, the laws that govern our ability to put impact fees in place. And so, all of the, that's why that study is focused on, on, on development, and it'll particularly be in large developments. So that we now have done a master plan, but also some confusion about what the master plan is. The master plan is not specifically related to the comprehensive plan. The master plan is the engineering that has been done so that we can identify the current status of our infrastructure, and we're very close to having a very good insight on that. And we've also estimated future needs for that plan, and so that's why the 2045 part of the comprehensive plan that we're doing, the survey, that's 20 years from now, what our needs are going to be, and that, unless we have those figures, then we can start, the hard part, figuring out how to play for all this.
Sir?
Sorry, long-winded, but thanks.
Here, press committee.
So, water, water.
It's a ticket.
Water, water, water.
We, there's been a lot of discussion this evening about the water plan. More to end suspension to your plan is, is necessary. There is no big river running through Pickens County. I mean, we all do recognize that, because we're, be careful with our water, and we're looking for solutions. Can't talk about them now, but to realize this is a real problem.
And there's no free water, I read something that they, there is no free water. So, if someone says that there's free water, there's no free water, because we either have to get it out of the ground and treat it, or we have to buy it from somebody else who has treated it. Now, there are, there is pure water that has to come, that can come from either a well or an active fountain, but that also has to be transported, and so there's infrastructure that is involved, that our infrastructure is such a disrepair that even if we fail on water, we still have to fix the infrastructure.
You did, yeah.
But to say, it's fair to say that we lay awake at night working on this. So, thank you.
Clarkson office, Mr. Handemist, thanks.
No updates for me? Still working out there, you know, constantly reassessing what, what work we can get by on, what we can do in-house, but not having the spoon money outside. Josh's team done a phenomenal job with that, going out to all our partners and making sure that they're collected there.
You know, city's working hard to try to keep laying it up to date. These parts is still work, doesn't, in progress.
We're still working there.
But, oh, that, this park's expected, word, moving forward.
Thanks, sir. So, speaking of parks, I have before me a save the date for pro-park groundbreaking. I'm excited to share this and I'm sure that we will be able to copy to all of those that are in attendance. But we will have this Monday, August 18th, at four P M. There will be a groundbreaking for pro-park. And so, I invite everyone is able to join us that day, where the city can send bikes out. I believe they'll start going out tomorrow to everyone that has been involved in the very beginning. This has been a long journey. I'm excited to have a groundbreaking, August 18th. Anything else for the partners, Mayor?
No, sir.
Public safety, Mr. Hammond.
Public safety, well, Mr. Parks, correct? Well, thank you for hanging around. I waited long enough, so I'll get some code road update first. So, just want to talk about transparency with me. Not that we've had a plan or known what to do, we've just known what we wanted to do, right? So, it started out back in April. Chief came to committee, we were talking about how we can utilize space that we have currently for training. So, I really feel like our first responders need additional training outside of just sitting in a classroom and taking us money without having to go down to Chip's Dick or other locations. So, that's kind of been the process. They came out in May and we went through kind of their, their vision and tried to get some buy-in. In June, we, we worked on setting aside money. In July, that was approved. And then, we were still kind of at a loss, like, there's been no set plan. Well, we were able to meet two weeks ago down in Cove Road to discuss what, what kind of training opportunities will be have down there. And the programming consists of physical agility training, so police have to go through a test of physical activity, so that's going to be there. Vehicle pullovers, situational trainings, active shooter trainings with no live rounds, land navigation, and high angle rescue. So, there will be no live rounds being shot down at the Cove Road property with our, our police force there. Fire is also going to utilize that space over by the waterfall for high road sports, which they've been doing, which is fantastic to see, and one of those metrics that pulls into our ISO. The other property that we were looking at is a line maintenance property that is mainly for fire, fire. They were talking about doing some training over there, vehicle extraction, pressurized fire, container control, flammable liquids control, vehicle fire training, structural firefighting, pumping training. So, there's, there's some vision there. We don't have all the funds aside, so seventy-five thousand dollars will set aside for that. But what will that get you, right? Fencing or whatever else. So, there's not going to be any structures really built out there, so I do want to pass that along. The other thing is the National Night Out, that was just approved tonight, is coming up in September thirteenth from four to eight, so come on out for some free hot dogs and burgers and hopefully we'll work on some shelves getting downtown. And then, Chief Chair wanted me to share that the radios, they're working on getting those programmed and they're getting them shipped in this week, so they're going to be rolling those out as well. So, even more training opportunities to go down to Cove Road and work out how we work with different departments and so forth. So, exciting stuff. A lot of things going on, public safety, but happy to report out that no live shipment will be used down there.
Thank you, sir. You have any further? Awesome. City Ranger comments from your office?
Mr. Mayor, so, would like to just echo the sentiments earlier about the long course of appreciation, Dave. So, just thank Matt and his team. Also, final downtown live this Saturday. I'd be remiss if I did not at least give kudos to the team, specifically Josh and his public works team and Carly, who's done an amazing job along with D E A. I always say it's a lot easier when you have volunteers that kind of step up like Pam and others to, to kind of really play into it. I think Dr. Proctor has incorporated, as a member of D E A, his significant others, and Ms. Karen, got to give you props for being out there in the heat. And Dr. Proctor, thank you as well for helping, but I know Ms. Karen is really great there. Also, mention the, the groundbreaking, Mayor, that's very exciting. Again, I'm going to keep giving kudos to Kim, because it's not every day that you have an individual who can get a one million dollar grant and beyond that, couple that with squashed monies and what you'll get is hopefully a year or so from now, we'll be able to do some celebration. Just wanted to also reiterate, Dr. Proctor mentioned about the comprehensive plan, Amy and her team have done a phenomenal job. I believe that the survey is available until September tenth, and there is a community meeting at six P M. on the following day, needs eleven. So, I did have to, to say, because I feel as though that it's, it's important, I appreciate the public comments this evening in person, Mr. Davis. I appreciate Mr. Terry coming and respectfully, asking questions, talking, common courtesy still goes a long way. Believe it or not, we have a great group of team leaders along with about eighty employees who really are trying to do the public good. Just please be mindful, the right thing to do, and it's never the wrong thing, because again, I grew up in South Georgia, I was taught, you can be kind, that's pretty much free. There's nothing free in this world, but being kind, that's one of my three tenants that if you want to break down any great big philosophy that I have, being kind is one of it. So, just please be mindful that when you're taking online surveys, you know, when you're seeing some of our folks out there trying to do good, believe it or not, I get the ones who don't do good. I address it. By and large, after a year here, these elected officials hold me accountable, I hold the team accountable. So, I'm always interested in things don't go good, but, you know, it's nice to hear when things do, and it'd be nice. Also, we are waiting for the tax digests, so then we can review that in concert with the twenty twenty-six budget. We did talk last month about the, the calendar that we were going on. There's still a lot of unknowns relative to the notices, assessments that went out. Again, the tax commissioner assessor sends those out. We get the digest maybe when we get it. So, that's about the good as I can, I can tell you. I, I, I do, I'm going to travel a little bit outside my lane, just to let you know that it's my understanding that part of the new House Bill five-eight-one did allow for property owners that otherwise had never filed a homestead exemption, because remember, the whole idea about five-eight-one was protecting property rights relative to residential homeowners, floating exemptions. If you have not filed your homestead, I would encourage you to go talk to the tax commissioner to say, hey, there was this idiot at city council, the city manager, who's talking out of his lane about filing some paperwork. And believe me, they'll call me up and say, quit trying to do our job, we can do it ourselves. But please, just, if you got questions about that, go ask them. Good, good question. Also, and by all means, go join us whenever we have our budget meetings, we'll be having those soon enough. And just want to kick it over to Kim. She's got about four or five points to just specify that Dr. Proctor had alluded to in terms of some additional timing for some, some projects that we're working on, just to kind of keep it on the forefront. But, you know, last week, it was very, very hot, so I want to commend the team, Josh, Charles, all the operations that are out there in the heat. I know yesterday and today, and perhaps a few days, you may tend to forget that last week, when the team's out there under the conditions they are, we are trying to be mindful, hydrate, stay well rested. So, Kim, you have a few points?
Yes, and you may have to remind me of a few. So, just as a reminder, in liner, our contract, contractor that has been awarded the GIFA project for sanitary sewer rehab, we should be having a press con with them here in maybe the next two or three weeks. Very eager to get that project started and get them on, in here so that they can start the cleaning and televising process, so that we can then evaluate and figure out what it is, what kind of rehab we need to do on the sewer in that one basin. We should be getting the next project here before you in, I'm not sure that it will be September, but it may, and that's going to be the master sewer lift station project, which is kind of the other piece to the sewer rehab. That is what helps by additional capacity in our collection system for that one basin. They are finalizing the design right now and working through some issues, and we should have those final plans very soon. The water treatment plant, a third GIFA project, as a reminder, that is a rehab project, that is not a capacity enhancement project, but nevertheless, is greatly needed at our water treatment plant. We should be getting those final plans probably for the October meeting is my, my guess. We do want to get a contractor on board as quickly as possible, we'll go out to bid, obviously. And then, with the winter months being traditionally our lower demand months, that would make some of the rehab at the plant a little easier to do, and so, we want to get a contractor on board as quickly as possible for that. As a reminder, we had talked at our last council meeting about Mark Whitfield Street and the replacement of the water main between D B Carroll and West Church Street. We will be meeting tomorrow to discuss the timing, actual start date for that project. We anticipate that it will start sometime next week. We will have more information and we'll push that out as quickly as we can. I have heard some kind of funny things about that project though, too, that I think it is very important that we address here. And one of those was that we were going to cut off the water to all of the businesses along Mark Whitfield and the west side of Main Street for two or three weeks while we did this work, which is not true, not true at all. You will still be in water. There will be a very short period of time, once the project has actually been constructed, been pressure tested, been chlorinated and back teed, that we will have to tie services over to the new line, though. But that's like a fifteen to thirty minute exercise to tie a service over. And we will give everyone lots and lots and lots of notice. I know Charles has already been discussing with contractor on perhaps making those tie-overs in the overnight hour so that it is least impactful to anybody that is trying to run a business in the afternoon, morning, that sort of thing. So, there will be more information coming out about Mark Whitfield here in the next day or so about what our actual start date for that project will be. We will be taking that project a block at a time. I anticipate they're going to start on the block that is between Stigall and West Church Street, because that works with another scheduled event that happens on Mark Whitfield Street. The five-fifteen cornhole is taking a break until September, and so, it would be handy if we could get that block knocked out, and then that would leave us the block between Stigall and D B Carroll that we would work on last. So, more information to come about that. Was there anything else? I don't think, I didn't write any of them down. So, okay, awesome. Good to you.
Would you make celebrations?
I'm sorry?
So, right.
Oh, yes, I'm so sorry. Yes. Didn't get to show my little picture last time, so I'm very excited. And in my haste, I wrote everybody's names down, and I very promptly forgot to write down how much time they've been with the city. So, that's the way it rolls. I'm going to take a stab at it, though. So, we have two folks in our finance department, Kim Ray and Jessica Dawkins. I believe they are both three years. I've been here four, and I know I have the lead, so it's got to be less than four. And then, Michael Higgins in our public works department, I believe he has a year under his belt. So, woo-hoo, I did it without any hands. Exactly. That's what I got.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor comments, I'll try to wrap it up. A lot has been mentioned. One thing that I want the public to be aware of, it was mentioned in the last county commission meeting, we did have a meeting with Chairman Stansman, L J Gilmore, Water Authority, on July sixteenth. This was to discuss water. And for us, we have a commitment initially of around or right at five hundred thousand gallons a day. That conversation is continuing. Those details will be worked out over time. So, Mr. Douglas and Scoldner and myself will probably have more meetings with those stakeholders. I've also met with representatives from Lieutenant Governor's Office, Senator Wardock's Office, Senator Alsop's Office, and with Congressman Lauterick's Office. I continue to communicate with these stakeholders around the most important conversation we're having these days, which is water. Also, thank you to Development Safety Committee. I want to thank you very much for listening. This actually goes for the entire council, all of our staff. I think it's very important that we remember, the one word that I mentioned last time citizens spoke in reference to the proposed training area, was that we as a nation, as a society, need the ability to compromise. And I believe that's what this committee and this council has committed itself to. We listened to the residents that spoke here with us. Their actual address, whether they are a city or county resident, did not matter to us. We care and we serve people in our community. And so, for us, the compromise is that we will not have live rounds being fired on the Cove Road training area. For me, that is a huge win. I would ask the staff members to communicate that accordingly with those that emailed or communicate with staff via email. If we can return those emails, I was hoping those individuals would be with us this evening, and they are not. So, please let them know. Other than that, downtown lives coming up, Jeep Fest is coming up, homecoming parade, marble festival, we'll be preparing for that pretty quickly. And last week, we had a really good meeting with W L J A. one-on-one, point one of the Pulse, the local radio station. We are excited for their new partnership, all the new things that they have going on over there. And as another update, we do have a Kennesaw State University senior who is in the last bit of their education at K S U. They'll be doing an unpaid internship here for the administration, and they're going to be working on code ordinance reviews and updates. So, I'm looking forward to that. And council, with that being said, I have no further comment, but would you have executive session listed for real estate in the week?
Mayor, can I go back to city council comments?
Absolutely. Let's go back to city council comments.
Sorry, I just had one thing. I had a member of public reach out to me several times. I thought he would make it tonight for public comments, but I'll carry his voice forward. Pinnacle Homes over there, there's been a lot of noise, complaints coming from residents, and we have a business that's having deliveries, making a lot of noise and lights, disturbing them in the middle of the night. With school coming back in, I can empathize with them with having children, and I'd like us to continue to have conversations about how we can continue to help them over there with the challenges that they're currently facing. So, just wanted to bring that out.
And actually, I believe one of the ordinance reviews or updates for the internship that's going to impact actually a quarter mile, so thank you for bringing it up. Council, you have the fourth motion to go into executive session for real estate.
So, moved.
Have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
In discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Want to say? Thank you, council. We are in executive session.